To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the last time I did this with YouTube, no one could hear me. So this is on, I'm pretty sure. The mics for all of you at the dais, you need to turn them on if you're going to talk, otherwise any side conversations will be picked up because we are streaming this on YouTube. And just as a reminder, we're doing this, we had, you know, some public asking a lot of questions about our potential acquisition of property at 14 Railroad Street. So we wanted to have this special meeting to go over that, the concept. And I, just to kind of refresh and kind of set the stage, I'm going to start with just a brief overview of the LDC and some of the initiatives, some of the programs. I promise it won't, it won't take long, but I think it's important because there were a lot of questions around, that were circulating via social media about the LDC. So I just wanted to review some of that. So first of all, good morning. We have a couple town board members. Supervisor Marin is joining us and Drew Cusamano. Thanks for coming and the LDC Board. So Suzy, if you can just flip to the next slide. Just to review the mission of the LDC, a not-for-profit entity effectively delivers a complete economic development program by encouraging and supporting small business investment in the town and the village. Key areas of focus are business recruitment, retention, and village revitalization. A little history of the LDC. Incorporated in 1999, no, I was not part of it then, but I have been part of it for quite a while. And it was really back then a vehicle to implement village revitalization. We do then and still do have a board of director oversight, which are sitting at the dais, and I'll introduce them in a moment. It's a 501(c)(4) structure. We are required under that to go through an annual audit. And we're also, we have reporting necessary under the public authorities guidelines. And all of the audits and all of that information is on the LDC website. We put that up annually, and that's victorldc.org. In 2014, the town established the Economic Development Department. And that was, up until then, the town and the village were jointly funding the LDC, but it was still just focused on village revitalization. In 2014, the town saw the need to start expanding the support services provided to businesses so that it would, you know, be available to town businesses. And the LDC then becomes a resource to drive economic development in both the village and the town. So Board of Directors that are sitting at the dais, there's a couple missing today, necessarily absent, I should say. But Rebecca Melton is our president. We have Liz Beeler, who's the Vice President and Treasurer, and she is at a insurance course right now for, that she could not miss. She runs Allstate Insurance in the village. Joe Corsi's our Secretary. He also had a conflict today. Mike Guinan, who is our Director and our Town Board Liaison, he's also a Town Board member. Scott Thome, Director, Vince Patron, and Ted Rundt. So really appreciate the efforts from the Board and appreciate them being here with us today. So I did just want to go over some of our initiatives. You know, we focus on recruitment and retention, providing business support. Some of those efforts are low-interest loans that we provide to businesses, acquiring, administering grant funding for building and streetscape improvements, administration of Village Facade Improvement Program. And that is funded through the Village URA and the LDC. So just to reiterate a little bit or expand on the business support programs, New York Main Street grant funding, we've been successful for three rounds, 2008, 13, and 18, assisted over 20 buildings. And what that means is interior and exterior building improvements, residential, commercial, and streetscape. Streetscape is everything from sidewalk, pavers, streetlights, flower pots, things like that. Village Facade Improvement Program, that was started in 2007. To date, we have funded over 70 facade projects. Facade is strictly the outside fronts of the building. So it's paint, it's windows, doors, things like that. What that equates to is an owner investment with all those projects of $360,475. And we funded $104,149. And that, again, is Village URA and the LDC working together on that. And I do want to point out, in 2020, we utilized this program to administer funds for COVID relief. With Board approval, I suggested, because of everything going on, that these businesses weren't going to do traditional projects. So why not try and help them out? They did have to apply, and they did have to show what they were going to use the funding for. And they were things like PPE and other things related to COVID. And that was a total amount of $10,000 that we provided to local businesses. And then the, continuing on the business support programs, the revolving loan program, to date, we've loaned out $230,000 plus to local businesses for things like building improvement, signage, equipment, working capital. And then we were successful collaborating with the county to be able to offer loans to town businesses. Traditionally, that fund was just for village businesses. And, you know, now that we, in 2014, expanded to incorporate the town businesses in the LDC and Economic Development Initiatives, we thought it was necessary to be able to offer them some of the same support. And we're still continuing with the county to expand that amount that we can offer. So staying in the game, you know, we need to not be status quo. We need to be cutting-edge to keep up with the surrounding communities that are continuing to offer incentives to attract businesses and retain businesses. We need to stay competitive to maintain and evolve the healthy business climate. And some of the things that I'm talking about are, you know, growing and expanding our existing programs. So everything we're doing is great. How do we take it to the next level? How do we keep it fresh? You know, developing innovative approaches, thinking outside the box, collaboration with multiple agencies. What I mean is the Chamber. I've got Amy DePrima here. She and I are working very closely together. The County, as I mentioned before, in Finger Lakes Region, Empire State Development. Those types of collaborations are going to take us to where we need to do, or where we need to be. And then Marketing Victor and the programs we have is huge, because without that, people don't know what we're up to. Go ahead, Suzy. So that brings me to our strategic plan. So in 2018, the LDC worked with an outside agency to do a strategic plan focused on the LDC and economic development. Four key areas of focus for the LDC and economic development came out of that plan. So one of which was the Adams Street Corridor, which was identified as a significant project in the Route 96 corridor plan that the town went through or developed. And what we, you know, just to give you an update where that is, we've received grant funding to do a feasibility study on that project. The town is in continued discussions with the railroad and the county regarding the railroad tracks. So that is something that's still on the radar. The downtown living strategy, we've tackled that a little bit with some of the grant funding and some of the rehabilitation to second-floor living spaces above the buildings. Marketing Victor, we are continuously doing that through Facebook promotions of businesses, TV and print promotion, or promoting collaboration with the Chamber and the benefits of opening a business here. TV testimonials, we just did a series of television commercials where we featured local businesses, longstanding local businesses, that spoke to their successes and the reason of those successes, being part of the Victor Business Community. So, and then the last thing that's in red is incubating entrepreneurs, which is really the focus of today's presentation. So incubating entrepreneurs, you know, what does that mean? That is, you know, it was identified in the strategic plan, and there are some, really some key benefits that were referenced in the plan that I want to point out. So it's development of a business incubator site for restaurant, retail, or agritourism. It's the ability through incubating to be able to offer affordable space. It offer, we'd be able to offer training services, marketing, business finance, social media, and, you know, the potential for these businesses to graduate into other spaces in Victor. The concept we're interested in bringing forward to this site that we're looking at is a market set up that would feature startup businesses selling their products, food, other retail items, possibly, you know, the agritourism piece. And it really lends itself, it folds right into our strategic plan. Suzy, can you flip, please? So, you know, how did we get there? How did we get to where we are right now? You know, going from concept, which, you know, the strategic plan and my ideas and talking to, you know, multiple businesses that are not quite ready to start or to pay, you know, a three- to five-year lease in a brick-and-mortar building, want to test their product out first. So, you know, that first bullet is talking to prospective businesses. We spent some time sending out letters of interest, getting feedback back from these potential businesses to find out what their needs were, what the space needs were, what kind of accommodations they were looking for, whether it was food-related, did they need kitchen space, do they need more training? You know, it was all to determine their needs and interests. We also inventoried, you know, available locations. And I want to point out that the location that we have focused on now was not our first pass-through. We looked at other locations to even lease. And it didn't make sense economically. It was a lot of, you know, we'd basically be leasing space, subleasing it to, you know, these tenants. And in the end, we wouldn't really have anything for the LDC as far as return on investment, so that we could put that money back into some programs, like I'm talking about, these business support programs. And the other thing, you know, as far as how did we get here, it's talking, you know, I've been talking to other, these partners that we collaborate with about the idea. And they're very supportive of it. And many of them have, are involved with similar operations in other communities. And I can talk about that in a minute. Go ahead, Suzy. So the property we're talking about is 14 Railroad Street. And a little bit of information, you know, it's really the center of that. It's the Fins Building. Yep, thank you. And so a little bit of background. The building has been for sale for three years. The current tenant, who I've had many conversations with, has been looking for a buyer for the business for some time. They were approached by the building owner to renew their lease in January of this year and chose not to do that. And again, I want to say, this isn't the only site we looked at. As far as purchasing, yes, but we looked at other options as far as leasing, and it just did not make sense economically. The building is, it lends itself, I'm sorry, Suzy, can you go to the next slide? That's where I've got. So it has, there's many advantages to the property. So there's over 11,000 square feet, two floors, 2.3 acres, two kitchens. So when I talk about food-related businesses, and, you know, one in particular, there's two that I've been talking to. One is gourmet chocolate, and the other is pasta, homemade pasta. They need kitchen space. They don't want to sign a lease somewhere and put in all that kitchen equipment and then not be sure if they can really make it. And they need something that is a month-to-month scenario maybe, or even a year, and where they have some assistance in the form of, like I was talking about, the training or some of that support that businesses need. So, you know, the two kitchens are very appealing as far as that. There's ample space on the first floor for multiple tenants. The parking, abundant parking, it's, the site is also manageable for event space and other opportunities. And when I talk about events, I'm not talking about anything, you know, substantial, but, you know, there's room to have music, there's room to, you know, possibly bring the farmer's market up there if we, you know, and we would talk to the village first and talk to the farmer's market. But it just lends itself to a lot of opportunity. And also, the proximity to the trail is a real plus, as far as the people coming off of that trail. What we've been trying to do with a, Amy's part of it with me, a hike and bike group, is promoting the trails, but also getting those people off the trails and to frequent some of the businesses in Victor. Perfect opportunity. They're right there at a trail hub, and they would be able to, you know, go into this location. And, you know, depending on what's there, they would be able to shop or eat. And so that's a real plus as far as the trail connection. You can flip. So just a little bit more on the advantages, you know, leverage the asset to facilitate business expansion, produce revenue to pay for the investment, and then sustain growth for the LDC community. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about the process and, you know, where we are with that. So the Board, the LDC Board approved a letter of intent that we issued between the LDC and the building owner, March of 2021. And the next logical step for the Board is to, an approval to move to a purchase contract with contingencies. The contingent, a couple of the, one of the contingencies is, you know, securing financing. And I say that because one of the rumors is that, you know, the LDC has all this money to go out and purchase a building. That's not the case. We would go through a process to secure financing. We've done a little investigating as far as, you know, talking to people that, again, that would be a collaboration. It could be, you know, in the form of some grants, loans, you know, a combination of things. We're working that out. We would, you know, next, we have to work on our due diligence items with the contract. A big thing, too, is staying engaged with these potential tenants that we've talked to. I have been doing that. They're still very interested. They haven't gone anywhere else. But, you know, making sure that they know that we're moving forward. And big is developing that full-blown business plan. Just like I tell all the businesses that come to me, we have to have a business plan. I've got an outline for it, but I have not, you know, done the full-blown plan that would include, you know, financial projections, rents, things like that. And then I already talked about reviewing the financing options. You can go ahead. So I just wanted to go over, there's similar concepts in the Finger Lakes Region. I mean, there's, these concepts are not just in Finger Lakes, but one is, well, they're listed there, the Rochester Tech Park, who took over part of the Kodak Building, Geneva Tech Park. The County is very involved with that and has invited me to come on a tour. The commissary at the Sibley Building, which is a food business incubator, I've also been in touch with the gentleman who runs that. Going to go and talk to them. A little bit different concept, but the Office Incubator at Spot Co. Work in Victor. And then I draw your attention to AE Artisan Market at 10 East Main, who, I mean, it's a success. She started out as a clothing and gift shop. She leased some additional space right next to her, opened up the wall. She's got over 30 artisans in there who would not, I mean, traditionally, they're at events, you know, at shows. They would not rent a storefront. And she's really getting rave reviews and a lot of business. The market concept we're pursuing will attract small businesses to Victor to give them an opportunity to not only test their product, but learn about business. And then if successful, we, my hope and my intent would be that they graduate and I can put them in another spot in Victor. Traditionally, and unfortunately, I, you know, we see a lot of businesses, especially small businesses, come and go. You know, we get very excited about them. They have a great concept, but we find out they get in there and they're, not that they don't know what they're doing, but they haven't really tested it out. And they don't have the support that, you know, they don't know anything about managing a business, or they don't know anything about marketing. These are some of the support services that I plan on bringing there. And one of the concepts when I was talking to the County is that we could have set days where there's somebody from Small Business Development Center there that will go over, you know, review their marketing plan, review their finances. You could have a bank come in and help do a seminar. So those are some of the things that, what the hope is, is that these businesses get their footing before they take that big leap and really lose a huge investment because they're committed to a lease, you know. And this way, you know, they can kind of test it out a little bit. So lastly is questions. And also, I want to give the Board an opportunity. I know I kind of, I went through this rather quickly, a lot of information. I don't know if the Board has anything to interject, comment on. And also, it's, you know, we're open for questions from people in the audience as well. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions or anything they want to add?
You can come up here.
Hello, I'm Randy Shea from 50 West Main Street, Victor, New York. I moved-
I think you can use this one. This one's on, I think.
All right, that's a lot better. I have a sore neck. I don't know how long I have. That would be the first question.
I don't think we're on a time constraint. Oh, go ahead.
Okay. First off, I'd like to say that I've been watching for a while. I moved here in 96. I did open a small business. I'm not doing great. But part of the way it's affordable for me is that I'm operating as an in-home business. I don't have the financing available to go all out with my plan of training people on how to do their own web developing. And plus, I got married along the way. So my plans changed. I don't know if any of you guys are married, but plans change when you get married. Anyway, so things are going okay for me overall. But I did also attend SUNY Oswego, graduated a four-year degree in Business Administration, minored in Economics, and almost had a concentration in Computer Science. That being said, I would expect that my credentials are far below what most people here have. Other than to just say that I wanted to point that out, that I do know how to read balance sheets, and I do know how to look at, you know, is this business working, that business working, et cetera. I also have gone from being a Democrat to a conservative in the time that I've lived here. So my views on the government's involvement into businesses should be very limited. I've never been a fan of Local Development Corporation or Urban Renewal Agency. I have been a fan of Victor Chamber of Commerce in the past. But with that being said, one thing that I would say is that I have to commend Kathy Rayburn. This is sort of a compliment. I think she could sell ice cubes to Eskimos living in Alaska. And I don't know if that's a compliment or not, but basically, she's very good at that. She's qualified to be a CEO of a company. She could be selling pharmaceuticals. She could be doing a lot of other things with her life than doing what she's doing. So that's a compliment. But what I would also say is that in marketing presentations, I look at the cost also, not just the benefit. Overall, Local Development Corporation has cost the town millions of dollars to even have it over the years. So if you look at the benefit of how much they've been able to do in helping businesses put facades on, et cetera, shouldn't you also look at how much it's actually cost the town to do that? In my opinion, the answer is yes. In my opinion, based on what I've seen overall in the Victor since 96, since I moved in here, I believe Local Development Corporation has hurt development more than helped. So maybe I'm a minority opinion in this community. I do know that there are some others that believe that, too. So with that being said, going to the incubator entrepreneur and buying Fins, the building that Fins is currently in, it's an example of what some people call crony capitalism. Now, you can say, well, we're going to help these people, we're going to help these people. And there are people that need help, no doubt. And maybe the government should be involved in some ways. But at the same time that you're providing space for entrepreneurs who may not be able to afford the higher rents, in a way, Fins is an entrepreneur that can afford the higher rents and/or to buy the building. So why not help them just buy the building? I mean-
He doesn't want to.
Okay, maybe he doesn't want to. But still, going to the idea, the second part of it is that if you are going to be a competitor to entrepreneurs that own buildings, brick-and-mortars, that are trying to rent their space, sometimes just to pay their mortgage, because sometimes they get in deep, then in a way, you're competition. You're creating competition to the free-market system. That is basically what I see this as being. So I don't really, I didn't come here prepared. I wanted to see what you had to propose. I already- I already just admitted my bias. I have a bias against Local Development Corporation even existing. I am aware that there are some people that are on the Local Development Corporation currently, have benefited big time materially in terms of the grants, not directly, but through local development companies, which very smart to have those for the different properties that they might own. They're also going to be one of the primary beneficiaries. If the railroad is taken out, they own some property along there. Well, let's just say, one of the local development companies own the property there. So I have been paying attention. I'm trying the best I can not to say anything bad about any of the wonderful people that are here. But I do have a philosophical, fundamental conflict with Local Development Corporation even existing. I do not understand how the Chamber of Commerce is in the town hall now. That doesn't make sense to me. I mean, at the same time, you want to work together with a local, with a local development corporation, or the town, or the governments. Blending it too much might not be good, because sometimes, sometimes the merchants want to go against what the government says. Well, you know, you gotta have to talk to the landlord now. So I do think that Victor Chamber of Commerce has come a long way, and they're, they're making great progress. But I do see also a conflict, and this new organization they started did not start in 1999, the Local Development Corporation did. And so I don't understand why it says it started in 1999, according to their website. VL, what is it? I don't know. It's a new organization that sort of umbrellas the two, and I don't know, I don't even confuse it.
It doesn't say we started in.
Helping, helping since 1999? I've got a, I've got a screenshot. You might want to change it, but that doesn't really represent what the umbrella organization would be, because Victor Chamber of Commerce has been in business for, I don't know, close to 50 years now. So if you want to have an umbrella organization supposed to encompass the two, you probably should say that it's been helping the community since 1960 something, you know, so.
That's a good point.
That's a good point. So anyway, that's about all I have to say for today. I will say that I'm going to continue to look at how things are going, and I'm going to continue comment favorably when it's justified. But for my point of view is that you've got the upper hand in terms of marketing and telling people how great a job that you're doing, basically just selling that side of it, not really saying the full picture though. And most people in the community either are not interested or not really paying attention, and I wish they were. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Randy. Does anyone else have, did you, did you want to respond?
I don't think so.
Does anybody up here want to respond? Do we want to have Vince maybe fill them in on, well, the details of? What's that? Trying to keep quiet so I'm not yelling. I will say that as far as helping the current Finn's owner, and I did reference that I've had many conversations with the owner, not just during this, but over the years, he has participated in some facade improvement program, the COVID program that I talked about, that we changed with the facade program. He, my understanding is that per the lease with his current building owner, it was first right of refusal as far as.
Yes, I guess he didn't want to hear your response.
Yeah, just to clarify for anybody watching, that there was in the lease, first right of refusal for that current tenant to purchase the building. And when we signed the letter of intent with the building owner, the building owner went to the owner of the restaurant and talked it through with him, and at that point, he did not take advantage of that clause in the, in the lease. So. Yep. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add?
Scott Thone, I just want to address some of Mr. Shea's comments as well as, can you hear me okay?
You might have to pull it towards you.
I'm on, okay. All right.
I've been a member of the Victor Local Development Corporation for two years, and I joined primarily to help develop commerce in the town and village of Victor, and help the merchants as well as the community members, which I have been a member of Victor for 40 years. I wish Mr. Shea had stayed, because, you know, I also have it in, in the high-technology industry, work with businesses all over, and employ various contractors, companies to help me deliver solutions to clients. The LDC is kind of a, it's a unique term, I guess. A lot of people don't understand it. And people need to understand that it is a quasi-government slash private organization that really intends to help drive commerce in the community. So I just want to put that on record and just say that, are we doing enough? Probably not. Can we do more? Absolutely. And I think it's, you know, in everyone's interest to perhaps express their opinions, share their feelings, but also to roll up your sleeves and get involved. And so I guess I would throw that challenge back to anyone who wants to perhaps get involved. So, thank you.
Good point. Did anyone want to speak to the statement about costing millions of dollars?
As far as costing the town millions of dollars?
I'm not sure where he's getting his figures. And quite honestly, I, I was struggling with that and writing some things down, and I'm more than, I'm going to do a little research on my own, because I can go back in history and look at the amount of money, you know, that the town and village have funded, and compare that to what we've been able to accomplish as far as, you know, program funding and things like that. You know, traditionally, it was, you know, a town and village venture where each contributed, that's how it was set up, each contributed equally to that. And yes, he's probably figuring in there my pay for, as a town employee, but I don't make millions. I, but I, I'm going to take that as a little bit of a challenge and go back and do a little research, and I'm sure with the help of our finance department, they can, they can put some numbers to it too. That would be helpful. Yeah. And just to clarify, everyone sitting here on this board is a volunteer?
All volunteers.
All right, if I could just make a general comment.
Okay.
Lights on, nobody's home. Vince Petrone. Kathy, I just wanted to thank you for pretty much laying out what it is we do, why we come to the, to the meetings, why we have interest in sitting on this board. I think you summarized it very, very intelligently, very concisely, and, you know, and I, I look at the mission, business recruitment, retention, and village revitalization. I mean, if that doesn't describe what we're trying to do with the 14 Railroad Street project, I don't know what does. So I, I think you've done a great job of expressing what our mission is and how this project ties into that. With regards to this project, like you said, there's a lot of due diligence and a lot of contingencies that we have to meet before this project sees its way through to fruition. And, you know, it's our intent to make sure that any monies that are spent are accounted for in a way that the revenue streams will not only support our expenses and what our costs may be moving forward, but hopefully at the end of the project, also allow us a positive revenue stream for our bottom line. So at the end of the month, end of the year, we hopefully see through our business plan that we're able to generate additional funds through this effort that'll help us in some of our other channels of how we want to help the community. So again, we're going to spend some time on this, we're going to put a business plan together, and, you know, if the numbers work, I think it's very important that we move forward. I think this project could really be something that shows Victor doing something that's a little different, that most other communities may want to mimic or do a similar situation for their local community. So I thank you for laying out what our process is and why we do what we do.
Thanks, Vince. Did you want to say something?
My name is Ted Rund. I've only been on the Victor Local Development Board for just a little over a year. I do want to just second what Vince said. Kathy, you've done a great job, and I appreciate all the time that my fellow board members volunteer their time here. I, I would like to address Mr. Shea's comment about helping out Mickey Finn's. Some people might not know this, but my uncle actually had a restaurant in that building back in the 80s, and my family comes from a long line of restaurants, to be specific, since 1906. So we've been doing this a long time, and it's a very difficult business to be in. And correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, when we, in the past, again, because I've only been here for a short time, in the past, when we have given a loan to a business, I'm pretty sure it hasn't ever exceeded the number of 30,000, maybe? It's been.
Yeah, I, I think there was one that was 35.
Right.
Yeah, traditionally.
Traditionally, right. So when Mr. Shea talks about, you know, why aren't we helping out Mickey Finn's, I think people have to understand that the relationship between the, the landowner and the tenant was coming to, I had a pinch point, really. I mean, this guy was month-to-month, the landlord, from what we've heard, has given him some discounts, and, and really, it was, it was coming to an end. So there's no way that Mickey Finn's could come to us and say, hey, can we borrow $700,000 or whatever the amount of money that the guy wanted for the building? I mean, it's just, I mean, it's unfortunate. And me, being a business owner and a restaurant owner, I feel for the Finn's people and staff. I'm, I'm, I have relationships with those people. And unfortunately, you know, COVID came and it changed our industry, and it's very difficult. And just for myself personally, I want, the more restaurants in the town, the better. I mean, I want a restaurant in that Denny's that sits in the, in the middle of Route 96 and the road near by the car wash there. As restaurant owners, we want more restaurants in the area. It breeds, people come into the area, we don't want less restaurants, we want staff from other restaurants frequenting other places, you know, just like car, you know, car sales places that you go out in Henrietta, there's so many that you can go hit. So I just wanted to clarify that, because I think that there's a false sense of, well, you know, we're trying to kick Finn's out, and we could have loaned him money. I mean, it was a little bit, it was a little bit more detailed than that. There's a lot more to that story there, and unfortunately, it's a sad one, and hopefully he can find another location, stay in Victor. But the VLDC can't be loaning out six-figure loans. That's just not something that we do. I mean, and I've only been here for a little over a year, so I'm not really sure if we could do that, but that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
You were correct.
Thank you, Teddy. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to contribute? Sure, come on up.
I'm here with Victor Chamber of Commerce, and I'd just like to say that working with Kathy has been fantastic, and I think our relationship has really grown, just as the unity of the town and helping everyone out. And I think it's a positive thing, change and moving forward. So I love our concept, and I hope people really dig deep and figure out what we're trying to accomplish here, and we're not trying to exclude anyone and going against government, not going against government. We're just here to help, and we're here to help businesses and share ideas. That's pretty much all it is. So I just want to thank you, and we're doing a great job, and I hope everyone else appreciates what we're trying to accomplish here.
Well said.
Thank you.
And I second that.
Hello, my name is Jim O'Dorzik. I'm actually the property owner at 14 Railroad Street. I just wanted to clear up a couple of things here really quickly. You know, regarding, you know, Finn's, Mr. Rund mentioned, you know, COVID is maybe one of the things, will certainly change the restaurant industry. But, you know, Nick had a, the owner of the, of the business had a five-year lease. He also has other enterprises in East Rochester, and he actually told me more than two and a half years ago that he wouldn't be extending his lease. So it wasn't a, really a COVID-related issue, you know, he just wanted to expend his efforts elsewhere. So he's been trying to sell the business for a couple of years. I actually became a Florida resident three years ago, and since that time, I'm, I was trying to sell the property as well. You know, so again, I just want to say it wasn't a, necessarily a COVID-related issue. But, you know, again, he had, he decided not to extend the lease, you know, several years ago. And when the lease did come up, and because of COVID, I've reduced his rent during that time well over 50%, because I thought it would be better for him to finish out the lease and have the, the building occupied and, and try to get another restaurant operator in there during this time, because as Mr. Rund pointed out, it's just a tough time for all restaurants. So again, this all I wanted to, to point out. If anybody has any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add? No? Okay. All right, anything else? Should we adjourn? The only other thing I would suggest is if the board is prepared, ready to, at the last board meeting, we talked about doing this in preparation of going to the purchase, moving to a purchase contract. Do we want to do that today? That, that is up to the board. I. We can take a vote on that? Okay, so do we need a resolution? What will the number be, Debbie?
That's a good question.
We'd have to look from, right. Do we want to just leave this for the next meeting? In two weeks? I mean, it's up to you guys.
I guess. What are we trying to accomplish in two weeks to make that decision?
Well, it's just, I mean, formality, do we, can we fill in the resolution number after the fact? That's fine. Okay. And it's basically to the board to approve moving to a purchase contract for the acquisition of 14 Railroad Street. Correct? I mean, that's the language. Okay, so I need a motion to pass resolution to be numbered in the future to make a vote on moving to purchase 14 Railroad Street.
Or if you want to preface that, move to create a purchase contract.
Purchase contract.
To go under contract.
Okay.
And with an understanding that there's a due diligence period, you know, and, and I think we all know what that due diligence.
Yeah, that was spelled out in the.
In the letter of intent that everybody's had.
Letter of intent.
So, I mean, that's the intention, is to get this under contract so we can start that process.
Right. Okay, so can I get a motion? Second?
The second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Awesome. Okay, you got that, Debbie? Adjourn. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, and a second? Adjourn.